Testing one, two, three, four, five. Good evening. Welcome, everybody. This is the Everett School Committee regular meeting of Monday, November 6, 2023. The time is 6:30 PM. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Cardello.
Present.
Ms. Cristiano.
Here.
Mayor Di Maria.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. La Monica.
Present.
Mr. Marcus.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Ms. Sarni.
Here.
Chairman Mangan.
Present.
Nine members present.
Nine members present. We do whatever call them. Would everyone please join me in saluting the flag?
Let's salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent, if we could just have you remain standing. I'm going to administer the oath of office just for everybody. And this is just to...
Jason, sit down.
This is just for Mr. Hart to be the secretary of the school committee.
I, William Hart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As secretary of the Everett School Committee.
As secretary of the Everett School Committee.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Everett School Committee.
Of the Everett School Committee.
Of the Constitution and laws.
Of the Constitution and laws.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the ordinances of the City of Everett.
And the ordinances of the City of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, please, please read the first item of the, on the agenda.
A reading of the records, October 16, 2023.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
We have a motion by Ms. Sarni, seconded by Mayor Di Maria, to waive the reading of the records for October 16, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Superintendent, please read the next item.
Item number four, public comment.
Motion to open public comment.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. La Monica, seconded by Ms. Cardello, to open up public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The first person we have is Mr. MacPuleo. Mr. Puleo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've disclosed previously, I'm married to one of the school committee members, but I do not speak for that individual, nor could anyone, really. Mr. Chairman, I want to draw everyone's attention to two important numbers: 99% and $21 million. What do these numbers represent, and why are they important? Well, I recently read an analysis of all of the roll-call votes of this school committee since January 2022, which is when everyone was sworn into office. It turns out that six members, a majority, voted with the mayor about 99% of the time. Now, of course, we expect there to be agreement, at least most of the time, on our school committee. But 99% of the time? That's more than mere coincidence. It's coordination. And of course, Mr. Chairman, that's perfectly legal. These votes are public votes, and it's up to the public to decide if that's what they want or not want, whether they agree or disagree with these members' actions. Now, $21 million, that's the amount of money the Everett Public Schools is estimated to receive in additional funding under the Student Opportunity Act, a law passed by a legislature and supported by our Democratic champions like State Senator Sal Diderminico, to help communities in need adequately fund public education. Again, this is in addition to its current budget. Imagine for a moment what could be done with those additional $21 million by an independent school committee, with a professional and independent superintendent, perhaps one like Mr. Hart or Ms. Tijilani. Imagine the benefits to our students, teachers, staff, and school resources. Now imagine a far different scenario, one where a majority that votes 99% with one person spends these funds at his direction. Imagine the shenanigans, like trying to ram through contract changes or spending money on a consultant without first taking a vote. Imagine the budgetary tricks when any city hall has total control over both the school department and city budgets. Never in the city's history has one person controlled everything simultaneously with no check or balance. Now, Mr. Chairman, I ask, who will be sitting in these seats in January? Will it be a group of independent members exercising caution and collaborating in the best interests of public education, spending these additional millions of dollars wisely, or will one person be calling all the shots? Mr. Chairman, I urge everyone to pay attention and think about these two numbers: 99% and $21 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puleo. The next person we have is Ms. Peggy Serino. Ms. Serino?
What are we teaching our children? When school committee members La Monica, Sarni, Cardillo, Marcus, and Mangan gave the superintendent good evaluations but refused to explain why, and then throw in with the guy in the corner office who did not fill out an evaluation to vote not to extend her contract, are we teaching our children that working hard so you will have the knowledge and qualifications to do the job of your choice doesn't matter, but politics does? Remember, the superintendent's temporary replacement, Billy Hart, is the chairman of the Board of Assessors, attends a guy in the corner office's fundraisers, and had to get an emergency superintendent's license to take the job. Did the last Monday night meeting teach our children that rules are for everyone else but not the membership of the school committee? Was it a lesson in how to ignore parliamentary procedure? When school committee person Samantha Lampit rose on a point of personal privilege, she was ignored. At times, there were so many motions on the floor, some didn't know what they were voting for. In addition to the looks and head shakes to indicate, "We don't want to vote for that," are we teaching our children if you don't get the results you want in one place, then you try going to another place to get the results you want? Some members of the school committee department went to, some members of the school committee department, went to City Hall HR because they were afraid of retribution. Does this mean city hall personnel can go to the school department HR if they're afraid of retribution from the guy in the corner office? When we were children and we wanted to do something, we'd go to mom if we thought she would say yes, or dad if she thought that he would say yes. But most of the time, the two of them knew what was going on, and they said no. Meanwhile, our children are sitting in overcrowded classrooms, and Pope John hasn't been renovated, and our taxes went up a lot. Tin can trailers are not the answer. If you have answered yes to any of my questions, please go out tomorrow and vote.
Mr. Chairman, it's a little inappropriate to have political speeches made before an election.
Mayor Di Maria, please. Mayor Di Maria.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not up for reelection tomorrow, but there are some members here that I prefer election.
Mayor Di Maria, please. Mayor Di Maria, you're out of order.
Is the chairman allowed to use people's names?
Mayor Di Maria, you're out of order.
Public participation? They are?
I would only like to add that every word I said tonight was the truth.
Listen, this is the last time. Mayor Di Maria, please don't interfere. Ms. Serino, you're only supposed to address what's on the agenda.
Right.
Like I said, that's what we're here to talk about.
Well, it all relates to what's on the agenda.
Voting in elections or anything else has nothing to do with it.
Where are any of her comments?
Mayor Di Maria, please.
Part of the agenda.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, can you point out to me what she's speaking about that's on the agenda tonight? Can you point out to me that?
Mayor Di Maria, I understand that. A lot of leeway, and I've always have, but you crossed the line, Mrs. Serino, when you talked about the election and voting for something that has no place here. Please.
Right.
Thank you.
And let's make sure she doesn't speak about it again.
Mayor Di Maria, please, don't interrupt.
Mr. Chairman, public comment, what is the definition of public comment?
A point of order.
They're supposed to speak, they're supposed to speak on issues on the calendar.
Mayor Di Maria, I am running the meeting.
I know what my name is, Mr. Chairman. They're supposed to, they're supposed to speak.
Mayor Di Maria, I am running the meeting. I have it under control. Ms. Serino, you done?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lambert, one point of order.
Our rules don't specify that...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Our rules don't specify that it has to be an agenda item, but it does have to be germane to the, to...
Well, the election, the election has nothing...
May I finish, please?
Sure.
It does not have to do with the agenda, but it does have to do with the work of the school committee. So I just want to clarify that our rules do not specify it has to be an agenda item, but it does have to be within the purview of the school committee.
Also, refer to, on that particular thing you just stated, refer to Robert's rules. You'll see what I'm talking about. The next person is David. David, I apologize the way the name was written. Is it River? Or is it, what is it?
Rivera.
Oh, okay. It just says R. It looks like R.I.V.E.R. I apologize.
Good evening. Regardless, my last name is Spanish, but with the accent would be Rivera. I apologize.
Rivera, okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I go by David. I'm here to talk about what's happening with this superintendent. I'm class of 2022 from Everett High and pride to be. When trying to write my speech, I couldn't find the words to describe the support that she has had for the past four or five years towards the Everett Public School community. But I do have words that I've said to her and that I want them to make public. Dear Superintendent Tijilani, as captain of the Spanish debate team, or equipo de debate en español, on behalf of the competitors and coaches, I would like to formally offer my appreciation and gratitude, if you permit the indulgence. I will explain the experience of debating in Spanish and its effects on the debaters. Many of us debaters are English language learners. While our path to acquire the language, we always felt that we were being judged with every single word we spoke. We have come to believe that our knowledge in English language was a proper measurement of our intelligence. But thanks to the life-changing experience of debating in our native language, we understood that our intelligence and capabilities go beyond a language barrier. In this event, we recognize how well-spoken every single debater is and how advanced our vocabulary is in Spanish and how eloquent we are. Dividing made us recognize how great our capabilities are. We learned that only speaking pretty well in a second language is not a reflection of our intelligence, but rather evidence of how much knowledge we are capable of retaining at once. The more time we spend on this team and what we now consider a family, we discovered that debating in our language in a country host lingua franca is English, do not mean building rivalry against other teams, but rather it meant that experience of opportunity for us to celebrate while connect us all, our language and culture in pursuing of excellence. Each member of the equipo de debate en español has grown both as a debater and as a person. We collaborate as a team, engage with other students in our school and across the greater Boston area. Each time building a community based on respect for ideas and viewpoints and acceptance. We would like to express our appreciation for the never-ending support of our coaches, Ms. Colokiras and Ms. Cardona, and our immense gratitude to you personally for your foresight in bringing debate en español to Everett High and your continued support through our first season. This later, I wrote on behalf of the team back in 2022 before graduation, and I just wonder what would happen if we don't get to have somebody who knows and listens to the actual community that they are representing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we have is David Fortin. Mr. Fortin?
Good evening. I'm David Fortin. I live at three-seater Terrace, Ward Four, in Everett. I'm a voter. I appreciate you all giving me your full attention as I speak this evening. Put down your pens. Put down your electronics. Put away your pencils. Put away your rulers. That's the way they taught us in school back 100 years ago. Robert's rules also, you've mentioned Robert's rules. It says that we speakers should not be given any more or any less than three minutes to speak. That I'm just throwing out there. Now, in response to Jason Marcus' comment a couple weeks, or last week, when he spoke about being accosted after a political event, a previous meeting, I would like to say abuse happens every day to somebody. This was a political maneuver to give votes, I believe. It's my opinion. I too was accosted, assaulted at a political event, a fundraiser at Anthony's in Molden for a gentleman who was running for a political office. I'm not going to mention his name because I'm too nice a guy to embarrass him, but he's among you. It happened that his guest speaker that night came up and elbowed me and another gentleman, caught me right in the esophagus. Now, I have COPD, I have emphysema, I have breathing problems. I could have sued, but instead, I yelled at this gentleman, and I use that term loosely, and I warned him that he could be facing jail time if it happened again, that hitting an elderly person or a senior is a felony. I'm not happy. Now, how could a school committee member, including the mayor, be absent from council meetings for several weeks to several months, return to a meeting when a particular vote is needed? I mentioned this to you, Mr. Mangan, a couple weeks ago. I don't know if you recall it, but I did. I spoke with you, and you told me I had to use your name. You said that this was a part of your rules, that this can be done, and also something should be done about it because it was wrong. You agreed with me that it was wrong. I asked this because one of the gentlemen had been here, hasn't been to one of the meetings for a long time. He came up for that particular meeting, and he left right after the vote. You know who you are. Some other things that need to be changed on your school committee that I feel. The interruption by the chairman when we were speaking, public participation. The insulting mayor who leaves us with...
Mr. Fortin, Mr. Fortin, please.
No, excuse me. I'm talking. That's the last time I'm going to make, that's the last time I'm mentioning his name. That's the last time I'm mentioning his name.
Mr. Fortin, no, it's not about mentioning his name. It's like I said to everybody else, when you have something to say, which you can say anything you need to say, but you have to direct it towards the chair. You cannot look at a specific member, it's like you're speaking to them. The rules specifically say you are to address the chair. That's all I'm forcing. Go ahead.
That I'd never heard of, but I'll, okay, I'll do it. You expect us to listen to you and to your committee when you speak. We don't get up at the meetings and raise our, we raise our hands. If I have a question, I'm going to raise my hand. If it's something you're talking about that I don't know about or I want more information, I can't speak on it until the next meeting. And then it's too late because the vote's already been taken. Stupid rule. But you expect us to listen to you. You listen to us once in a while. If you want our respect, then you have, then you have to give us some. I laugh at one of the gentleman's impeccable attendance record here. I really laugh at it because it's ridiculous. You've all been hired to represent us, the people. Remember who pays your salary? We, the voters, not the mayor, not the city. It comes from our taxes that go up every year. I want to see where you'll say we need to look at you, not the committee. I really would like to look into that on a one-to-one basis or the book or whatever you're using for that.
Mr. Fortin, I didn't mean to interrupt again, but you have, you have 30 seconds left.
No, I have.
No, you have 30 seconds left, is what I'm telling you.
Well, then, please be quiet, let me finish.
The rules, no, please, don't be rude.
I'm not being rude. You're being rude.
You just stated, Mr. Fortin, you just stated three minutes. You're over four minutes right now. As a courtesy, I said you have an extra 30 seconds.
I doubt it. I doubt it. But let me finish. Let me finish, and then I'll leave.
15 seconds, Mr. Fortin.
I'll take what I need.
No, Mr. Fortin, you're done. Thank you.
Denying me, denying my person in rights, are you?
The next person we have is Ms. Mary Fortin. Ms. Fortin?
Good morning. That's a nice throat.
My gosh.
Chelsea used to say that's a nice throat. Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Ms. Fortin, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mangan. As you know, I'm usually here all meetings, and I try to figure out exactly where you're coming from and how we feel about it and what our opinion is, and that's when we come back and speak. I've been in a restaurant for 50 years, multiple times as supervisory, in charge of hiring, firing, et cetera, interdisciplinary. I would never put someone on administrative leave without them knowing why. I would be guaranteed a lawsuit. I said, can you explain it to me?
We can't, we're not the, it's not.
You are supposed to talk back, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Because from what I know of Priya, she worked hard to get our students through the COVID, two-year COVID, and to keep their grades up and keep them interested and informed. The kids love her. The parents love her. They feel they can call her anytime, and she's there for them. Many of these parents barely speak English and have a very hard time. They don't understand these things like you and I would, and we sometimes have problems. So why, just why wasn't she given the list of complaints? I don't understand that. That makes no sense, and I'd be afraid you guys are going to be in trouble. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Fortin. The next person we have is Jocelyn Solis.
Good evening to all. My name is Jocelyn Solis. I'm an Everett resident and I'm a community organizer for La Comunidad. I would like to read to you all our public statement that just came out recently. To the Everett community at large, but particularly to the Everett School Committee and Everett Public School students and families, La Comunidad Inc. wanted to take this opportunity to publicly share that we will continue to fight to help to improve our EPS system by advocating and organizing around the quality of education and adequate infrastructure and other important resources. We don't support the current process and political intent that has been imposed to replace the current leadership, leadership of our EPS system, currently being carried out by Alma Advisory Group, a consulting firm from Chicago, Illinois. However, will continue to utilize any opportunity to elevate the current needs of our families, particularly as it relates to our EPS system. We passionately believe in the importance of transparency in public or private meetings. It is essential for fostering trust, accountability, and informed participation in our democratic processes. This enables residents to have a clear understanding of the decisions and discussions that affect our community, promoting inclusion, a platform for collaboration, constructive dialogue, and informed decision-making for all. Transparency involving EPS concerns is crucial for the betterment of our school system. Last week, we had the opportunity, at their request, to meet with a consultant from Alma Advisory Group about their current search process. In V, we attended one of their community meetings at the Keverin School. Both activities left us with many more questions than answers and proved that the community is not being heard. In fact, this is completely the opposite of a public, transparent, and accountable process that we as a community fought for in 2018 and 2019. Let us remind you that previous search arrived as an urgent necessity after allegations of sexual misconduct and racism of the former superintendent resurfaced, leading to criminal charges and resignation. This is why it's imperative that this process includes active participation from our stakeholders. Today, we strongly believe that our community-involved process in 2018, 2019 yielded positive results. Ironically, again, as a community, we have not been provided with conclusive arguments for not renewing the contract of our current EPS superintendent. Yet, the other important groups continue to praise her performance, such as statewide honor recognition by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. La Comunidad Inc. and our membership demands that our, their school committee honors the 2018-2019 search process and its results. More importantly, that our current superintendent's contract gets renewed as soon as possible. We would like to call on every member of the city of Everett to stand together and share responsibility to ensure that our local government, particularly the school committee, strives to improve, for improvement in transparency, accountability, and community engagement. Our city Everett was recently labeled as one of the most diverse cities in the state of Massachusetts, and we must move forward, being and thriving an inclusive community as every voice should be heard and every member should be valued. Sincerely, Antonio Maya, Executive Director from La Comunidad Inc. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. The next person we have is Paul Ostereidi. Mr. Ostereidi?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion to extend public comment? I think we went over the 15 minutes.
Okay, we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. La Monica, seconded by Mr. Barrows to extend public comment. Roll call, vote. Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin? Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Chairman Mangan?
Yes.
So moved, 10-0. 10-0, you extended public comment. The next person is Paul Ostereidi. Mr. Ostereidi?
Good evening. The timing of bringing up the Malden Transportation Contract Extension right after placing Ms. Talihani on leave is not a good look. I am sure you and the residents are very familiar with last June's request by Malden Transportation for a 4% increase on their existing contract, and the mayor arguing that city contracts go 25% over budget all the time. Maybe the city projects do, but not the schools, at least not while Ms. Talihani was superintendent. Next, I find it somewhat ironic that this committee issued an RFP to begin a search for a new superintendent now because they wanted to minimize the disruption and impact to the students, teachers, and staff. How is that working out? At the last regular meeting, I asked how this committee could select a company that only had done one superintendent search for Denver in 2021. Mr. Mangan mentioned that they were also doing one in Lawrence. That's incorrect. I contacted DESI, and they have not yet selected a company for Lawrence as of last week. Then I asked about the payment of $85,600. The RFP issued for Lawrence doesn't have any upfront payments at all and only pays the vendor if a candidate for a superintendent is actually found. Then we have the search for Boston superintendent, which costs $75,000 for school population of above 50,000 kids, and we are paying $86,000 for a population of less than 8,000 kids. Does that sound right to anyone? And I'm not speaking to anyone, any of you here, but the people watching at home, the residents, the seniors, the renters, and taxpayers, because no matter what, if you have, because no matter if you have kids in school or not, we all end up paying for this committee's bad decisions. Next, I attended the Alma meeting, and they spoke about what the search committee thought was important in the superintendent. A lot of talk about transparency, along with Everett pride, knowing the community and being politically savvy, being key attributes in a superintendent. Nothing about putting the kids' education or well-being being first above all. To me, this sounded like a search committee is looking for Fred Forrester 2.0. When Alma presented the key qualifications the search committee had included, all I could see was going back 20 years to the Forrester era with scandals, lawsuits, NDAs with millions of dollars in payouts. Our taxes not going to education, but protecting predators. Is that what Everett really wants? I thought a superintendent's job was to educate the children and to be fiscally responsible to the city. Does anyone doubt that there is a connection between Alma and the mayor, or the mayor or a member of the mayor's administration that just happens to be on the search committee? Then we have the outrageous behavior of this committee and the mayor against Ms. Talihani. How can you place someone on leave without any due process? Even your attorney, Mr. Galvin, said the committee did not have to place her on leave. How would any of you feel being fired without knowing who, what, or why, or if the charges were even against you? This all sounds very un-American to me. And then we have the mayor, or some of you, talking about not permitting a hostile work environment. Are you kidding? Where were you during the last 20 years of Forrester's reign? How many NDAs did you sign off on? How many millions of dollars do we pay out to protect Mr. Forrester? Sitting through these meetings, I feel like I'm watching a scene from the movie The Godfather, where Michael is talking to his brother-in-law, Cal, about setting his brother, Sonny, up for an ambush and saying, "Don't tell me that you're innocent because..."
That has nothing, Mr. Ostereidi, that has nothing to do with school committee thing, talking about that.
It's going to, it's going to, it's going to roll.
You have 30 seconds left, too, by the way.
Essentially, what we're doing is calculating in blatant, so don't talk about being innocent or caring for the kids or teachers. Don't insult the people's intelligence. Mr. Hart, I don't know you. All I've been told is that you are the better, the best, better than the other two candidates that the mayor had picked. I would like to ask you to commit to not allow any retaliation against the students, their parents, teachers, and staff that voiced support for Ms. Talihani. I also hope that you continue the fight for Pope John as a middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we have is Gianna Martin. Gianna?
Good evening. My name is Gianna Martin, and I'm an EHS graduate of 2020. I am a current college student studying history. I study how it is done, how it is thought about, and more importantly, how it shapes our society. The removal of Superintendent Priya Talihani is undoubtedly a moment in Everett's history that will forever embed a stain of corruption, discord, and the failing of children. I look at some of the bodies that sit before me and have zero reservations about their transparency and obligation to protect teachers, students, admin, and residents. On the flip side, I see members who contribute very little problem-solving and are ridden with nepotism. I find it extremely disturbing that the City of Everett Human Resources is at the empty center of the publicized allegations regarding a hostile work environment. Let me tell you why. Some months ago, I made a social media post expressing my disapproval of the amount of black and brown kids who are employed as manual laborers for the city summer program versus the few and selective internship positions. Some youth staff expressed they were denied shade breaks, water, and were scolded or even dismissed when not complying to these denials. I was silenced for this, but I will no longer let fear and intimidation be the status quo. My social media post unveiled a great reactionary fear from youth services and human resources in the city of Everett. Congruently, the City of Everett Human Resources conducted heavily sheltered meetings with me and my coworkers who once worked at the Everett Rec Center. These were in regards to processes we wanted to see reformed, cultures we wanted changed, and strengthened management. Kathy Drain, Terry Ronco, and Roberto Velazquez repeatedly told us it was a safe space. Kathy Drain personally alluded to me as a woman of color who is trying to infiltrate systems that I need to be strategic, whatever that means. All I can say is that four employees, including myself, who spoke up, were removed from the rec center and as city employees entirely. Human Resources will combat this by saying we were only on a year-round employment, but before any of this unraveled, we had already been in for over a year. The City of Everett Human Resources is currently withholding wages from a youth staff member of the rec, and they denied a staff member benefits in a full position after agreements had already been signed. The only remaining staff member of the Everett Rec Department is the same man that's been in his cushy seat for over 20 years. Need I say more? Since city issues have trickled into EPS spaces, we need to call into question the integrity and processes of the city of Everett. Let me further thought provoke. Di Maria taking the conclusion of the U.S. Attorney's Investigation of Racism and wearing it as a badge of honor. Being under an inquiry on the basis of racism doesn't happen for no reason. Or like how the city allows a white councilman who used the N-word to pull papers for reelection, the diversity, equity, and inclusion certificate he obtained from Suffolk University is merely a performative token. Or how a certain school committee candidate is openly homophobic and transphobic even though a substantial percentage of our students identify with the LGBTQ plus community.
Ms. Martin, 30 seconds.
If you think our students won't remember these moments of Everett's history, know that their personal experiences equip them with far more political and self-awareness than you think. That is what makes them worthy of being served entirely and honestly. The bigotry will continue to be exposed when city representatives continuously disregard the public's outcries. When the deserving members are voted out, watch how the City of Everett will flourish in the new year with new faces who actually have an appetite for equity and student needs. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we have is Fred Capone. Mr. Capone?
Good evening. Fred Capone, 383 Broadway, here in Everett. I don't have any children in the school system, but I value education, and as a taxpayer in this community, I do have a stake. The majority of this committee has pursued personal political vendettas over the best interests of our schoolchildren. The hasty deliberation, if in fact there even was any, to put the superintendent on paid leave was based on 10 redacted complaints viewed by members only moments before the vote was taken. It is obvious that this was a coordinated event and final of many efforts to undermine the most diverse superintendent this city ever had and who has proven herself more than capable. I am confident that a more thorough examination of those complaints will reveal common threads in most, if not all of them, with all roads leading to City Hall. One petulant child puts his own selfish wants above the actual needs of our community and our children on a regular basis. Unfortunately, this incompetent Pied Piper has too many willing elected officials on this body and the city council to do his bidding without question. The irresponsible actions of these individuals negatively impact our children's education and our city's financial health, and we, the taxpayers, will ultimately end up paying millions for their ignorance. Pope John should be used as a school. It's a request I made as a city councillor back in 2019, when the city took it by eminent domain. The mayor's response, "Our schools are not overcrowded." That comment, like most that leave his mouth, was untrue. Four years later, our school overcrowding problems continue to worsen, and Pope John serves no significant benefit to this community, while the taxpayers continue to pay the interest off the $10.5 million expense. Residents, elected officials, parents, and administrators express preference for Pope John use over modulars. Despite publicly stating he would do what the council and school committee wanted, the mayor, again, demonstrating his inability to be upfront and honest, pushed for modular classrooms. As I have watched the many votes cast by members of this body and the city council, it is painfully clear. it is painfully clear that there is a desperate need to change most of our elected officials. On this body, there will be a change in at least several wards, because members are not running for reelection. Of the remaining members, only three should be reelected.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, please.
If an individual cannot express their feelings to a body...
Elections have nothing to do with school business. It has anything to do with school business?
I'm talking about my elected representatives.
All right, that's elections.
If an individual cannot speak...
You're trying to influence elections.
I've had to listen to a certain individual for eight years.
You're a petulant child, be honest with us.
Mr. Mayor, please.
With respect.
This guy's a petulant child.
The racists have nothing to do with school business.
Clearly.
He's destroyed our city.
Case in point.
With all his gains.
Please. Mr. Chairman, case in point.
Yes, case in point.
Capone, I'm sorry, you have 30 seconds.
Fortunately, two of the members are unopposed, one is a member-at-large. The voters would serve our community and our children well to discard the rest and start anew.
Mr. Chairman, that is uncalled for, Mr. Chairman.
Folks, this is not a political...
You allowed him to do it, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, may I recognize on a matter of personal privilege...
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to be recognized on a matter of personal privilege for correct inaccurate information shared this evening by speakers regarding actions taken by the city.
Folks, no interruptions. No interruptions. This is a warning.
Mr. Chairman, the speaker, former city councillor who unsuccessfully ran for mayor, speaks about calling me a petulant child, but it's been him and his political organization that has destroyed this city for the past two years. Okay?
Folks, please.
They have destroyed our city. They've worked...
That's it!
They've worked...
Five-minute recess. Come on, for five-minute recess, that's it. Five-minute recess, that's it.
Mike, where's your gavel?
If you can't control your thing, then you're obviously escorted out.
I'll show you, ready?
I got it.
Welcome back to the Everett School Committee. Where we left off, Mia Di Maria, you had the microphone on a personal privilege. Continue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't know where to begin because I have so many inaccurate statements that were made this evening to correct. For instance, the Pope John High School that we continue to speak about in regards to reusing for a middle school, it was a vote taken by the city council to take that building by eminent domain for senior housing and veterans housing. We took that vote, money was appropriated, and then we went to dispose of that building and it became a political ball, okay, to say the least. As you know, we have an MSBA application in to build a brand-new high school with vocational school that we hope to get monies to offset the cost of that school. To renovate Pope John, the estimated costs were about close to $100 million, okay?
Folks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To build a new high school with vocational school, if we would get that built by MSBA with reimbursement rates, we probably would get anywhere from participating costs, 80% of participating costs paid for, which would leave us probably a couple hundred thousand, two, three, a few hundred million dollars to pay. We don't want to have the ability to do both. So it's the long-term plan, Mr. Chairman. And in the short term, we're not building tin cans. We're actually, there are actually classrooms that are A-conditioned with bathrooms and that's suitable to suffice the need of overcrowding in the short term when you be building your long-term plan. And then this building could be a building that will facilitate our middle schools, a real middle school with cafeteria and gym and drop-off and so forth. So anyways, I don't want to get into that issue, being called a petulant child by someone who acts like one and his group that continue to destroy our city, that organized walkouts, children's walkouts with members of this school department on City Hall. It was all organized, and we all know it. We read the depositions. We've seen what the leader Harold has, who has been embroiled in. I think we're all, we all understand what's happening. But the City of Everett, through its Human Resource Department, received complaints about workplace issues from employees of the school department. And let me finish my statement, okay, Mr. Chairman? These employees actually exist, and any suggestion that the complaints were made up by the city are false. Employees have options about what avenues or forums they choose to raise concerns. The city's HR department is one option. My administration is working to create workplaces that encourage employees to come forward with their concerns. We focus on encouraging that behavior and avoid scrutinizing employees for where they choose to raise their concerns or complaints. It is also inaccurate to state that any employee's rights have been denied. The city's HR department listened to the concerns raised and determined that there was enough information to recommend that the school committee consider conducting a full investigation. A full investigation includes an independent outside party who will speak to the individuals, including those who raised the concerns and made the complaints, as well as speak to the employees whose alleged conduct is the subject of the complaint. The city's HR director will confirm for the investigator the identities of the employees who raised the concerns. It is important for students, their families, and all residents to know that the city has reached no conclusion about the concerns raised and the complaints made, other than the conclusion that the employees involved deserved to have the issues reviewed in full through a complete investigation. I'd like to thank the members of the committee for allowing me to correct false and inaccurate information about the city's action in these matters.
Thank you. The next person we have is Joanna Garen. Ms. Garen?
I'm going to be very brief. I'm just mostly here to say how disappointed I am with the majority of this school committee. As the parent of a child at the Webster School in the special ed department, and, I mean, I could say a lot of things, but what it comes down to is a lack of transparency on how you have all voted and why you've voted. And this lack of transparency means that the people of the city are not well-informed as to why you're all voting the way you are. And due to the lack of transparency, I can only guess why you've all voted the way you have. And that leads to, you know, a lot of bad things because I don't know. I don't have any clear explanation. Everything seems very muddled, and I don't think that's right. So I believe the people of this city deserve to be represented by people on a committee who will not, who will vote in the interests of our children and will explain why they voting, they are voting the way they are, so everyone can make an informed decision. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person we have is Nelda O'Neill. Ms. O'Neill?
My name is Nelda O'Neill, and first and foremost, I'm a parent of a child attending the Everett Public School System. I am also a lifelong tax-paying resident of Everett, and most importantly, for almost the last 30 years, an educator in the Everett Public School System. I would like to take this time to thank those of you that have had to make some very hard and controversial decisions over the last six months. However, it is truly my belief that these decisions will make our system a stronger and better learning environment for the children of Everett. Many of you have taken a lot of unnecessary criticism from individuals that have no children in the system and are only looking to benefit themselves with no forethought to what is best for our children. Again, kudos to those of you who saw for what it was and was and stayed the course. I horribly believe that your decision to name William Hart the acting superintendent at the Everett Public School System was a great one. I have known Mr. Hart for over 25 years, and his commitment to the education of our children has never faltered, always doing what's best for those he educates. His choice was second to none, the absolute best you could have made. Keep up the good work. You're doing a fantastic job. I am extremely confident and excited that the Everett Public School System will now have a chance to once again be an institution of learning, which is exactly why we should all be striving for, to keep the children first and foremost. Thank you for this time, and again, a job well done.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Janice Locke. Ms. Locke?
I really don't have anything in writing. I didn't know what I was going to say. I'm just, shame on you guys. Seriously, do the job you are elected to do, or you will be sent packing. Don't forget to vote tomorrow.
Motion to close public participation?
Second.
One second. We gotta make a motion to close.
Motion's made.
I didn't, Ms. Caddillo? No, I don't know.
I'll make the motion to close.
Second.
Motion, motion, was...
Someone didn't speak.
Oh, Ms. Sanchez, did you want to speak? Oh, I'm sorry you weren't on the list. I apologize. I didn't ask, I apologize. Ms. Sanchez?
Thank you so much. Good evening, I'm Nancy Sanchez from Lynn Street in Everett. With everything that's gone on for the last few weeks, I thought it would be good to talk about something we can find some area to agree on: student learning. Data both pre- and post-pandemic suggests that our grades have probably been inflated. This certainly has not been done intentionally. As educators, we want to support the hard work of our students with reasonable grades, and we want to be sure their transcripts look good for the colleges that they apply to. However, both the MCAS and the SAT scores do not line up at the end-of-year grades, and this means that the grades our students receive are not a realistic representation of what they have learned. Add to this that the national data suggests that most students still need another four to six months of instruction to catch up from pre-pandemic learning loss, and we have a real challenge ahead of us. The multiple curriculum changes in the last few years across most disciplines, along with the complete absence of curriculum and supplies for some subjects, only exacerbates this problem. For example, the Open SciEd our ninth-grade biology program was using was written for the middle school. They had a meeting today to discuss it. Our curriculum director did not attend. It is not fully developed, and it doesn't align with state frameworks or with the MCAS exam. Our robotics program, a three-year pathway, has had neither a curriculum nor supplies in over three years. This means that students who have taken all three years of robotics have learned only a small fraction of the skills they need after graduation. Even our grade recovery program, which is well-intentioned and meets a serious need, appears to lack a lot of rigor. While some of our programs are rigorous and successful, currently not all of our grades accurately reflect student learning. Our students are not being prepared for the MCAS, the SATs, success in higher ed, post-high school employment. Please, allow not just a select few, but all of the teachers who see our students daily to have a voice in selecting and implementing curriculum. Please stop switching and implementing curriculum with every passing educational fad and understand that in spite of everyone's best efforts, sometimes students will need to repeat a subject or a grade. Equity in education doesn't mean that everyone gets an A or a gold star. It means that all of our students are viewed as successful, and all are given the tools and support and instruction they need to grow and achieve their personal best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm sorry, is there anybody else? I didn't ask that. See, and we have the motion earlier by Mr. Lamonic, a second by Mr. Barrows to close public participation. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Superintendent?
Item number five. Item number five, report of the student representative, which I don't think...
And we don't see the student representative here today, Mr. Superintendent, so we can go on to the next item.
Item number six is the report of the superintendent. There's a few items that had been placed on this agenda prior to my arrival, but before I even begin those remarks, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who's in attendance this evening. I think the debate and the conversation is certainly productive, and it is a learning experience, whether we agree or disagree with one another. I think, you know, civil discourse isn't a bad thing, and I just wanted to thank people for their comments, and I take them seriously. Abraham Lincoln once said, "Any nation that does not honor its heroes will not long endure." And this week, we have an opportunity to acknowledge and pay tribute to those who have served our country across this city, across this nation. Of course, right here in this room, there's several members. I know that Member Cristiano and Member Caddillo are both veterans, and there are, I think, at least one or two folks in the audience. So let's not forget that at the end of this week after we finish our business this evening. And I know at Saturday, the Conley Center at 10 o'clock will be having an event that's usually a nice tribute to our veterans. So with that, item number one is a request for approval to extend the district's contract with Malden Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Before we take the request up, I just want to read, because it was information that was stated a little while ago, but just to give you a little bit of background that this was just brought up. In July, Malden Transportation reached out to school department requesting this two-year extension plus the two-year, two-yearly step increases as vital in maintaining competitive wages for drivers and monitors and to keep pace with rising new vehicle purchases, maintenance, insurance, and fuel charges. We reached out to a couple of other transportation companies as well to get comparative quotes before making a decision on moving forward. The companies we reached out to either had higher rates or, if lower, could not provide services for all the routes we needed. It did not seem worth it to move to another provider or providers when we have an established relationship with Malden who can provide services for all our required routes as needed. We did also request that Malden review and revise their request to cap all the requested increases, not more than 13% higher than the current rates. Of the 16 proposed rates that exceeded 13%, they have capped a majority. They requested that six of the proposed cap rates cap 17%. These runs are the Beverly School for the Deaf, the May Center, Mel Mach, Perkins School for the Blind, Shore Collaborative, and Walker Beacon School. This 17% increase for the schools listed above are due to challenges that can occur with students, traffic, and wait times. These runs usually require a premium to be paid to drivers to maintain consistency. Additionally, their ask for the 17% increase was also for the Shore Collaborative as a majority of vehicles assigned there are wheelchair vans. Wheelchair vans in their list have more mechanical pieces and require more maintenance. Thank you for that. So that item number one on the request for approval to extend the district's contract with Malden Transportation is...
Mr. Chairman, on the motion.
On the motion, excuse me, Ms. Slender.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And unfortunately, I was unaware of the request being made. I did not personally receive the letter, and it was not on any of our committee agendas for discussion. I have been working on something that I was hoping to present by the end of the year. Obviously, there's a lot of, a lot going on, and because the contract was up in June. So I'm speaking about this prematurely, but I'm asking for members to give me... So I'm speaking about this prematurely, but I'm asking for members to give me time to be able to present this in full. So the Inflation Reduction Act is a federal grant that its intention is, is to provide for mitigation of climate impacts. So diesel buses are one of the greatest contributors to air quality impacts, specifically impacting respiratory issues. And these are our most vulnerable students on these buses in the morning and in the afternoon. The IRA is providing through state and then municipal school districts, state grant funding. So it's at a considerable savings for school bus electrification, while it would not satisfy all of our routes due to some have extensive lengths, and that's part of the work I've been doing. I have not had time to be able to put together all of the information, but I do ask that I be given time before we vote on this, since the contract is not up until June. This would give the district, if we were able to secure the grant, considerable savings and not only improve the climate impacts, but the respiratory health of our students, some of which are the most vulnerable in our schools. So with that, I would just ask my colleagues to give.
Jason, finish up, finish up.
I would just ask my colleagues to give me the time to be able to present that information and make a decision based on all of the options in front of us.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we do need a second on that motion.
Oh, yes, I apologize. We had a favorable, thank you for bringing up Ms. Cardillo, my era. We had a motion by Mr. McGlaughlin, favorable action.
Second.
We have a second. Now on the motion, Mr. Marcus, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a chance to talk to these people about what's been going on, and I thought one of the main problems was the hotel on the Parkway. They have a lot of immigrants in there. I don't know how many, there were 200 that had to be placed, and it's in Everett, the hotel, and the taxis were going to be, you know, going there, and it was going to cost a lot of extra money. I don't know how much extra. I thought that was part of this too, you know, they had, but I didn't hear you say it, read it. I know that's a problem with the kids getting, them picking them up, the hotel, bringing them to school, them pick them up, it was a big problem.
Thank you for actually bringing it up, Mr. Marcus. Yes, actually, so just want to let, Mr. Barrows, just before I acknowledge you, then, Ms. Sarni. I had met with the former, well, Ms., I didn't say former, Mr. Hiliani a couple months ago, as well as Ms. Giant in the superintendent's office, along with the two representatives, Mr. David and Les Marvitz of Malden Transportation. And we talked about this issue for maybe an hour, an hour and a half, and I can say honestly and truthfully that both the CFO and the superintendent were absolutely 100% in favor of moving forward with this. It was just a matter of going out and getting some comps, which they did, Ms. Giant did properly. This actually would have probably been on the agenda close to a month ago, but they did due diligence, and they got the comps because they went through the, the, what do you call it, procurement officer was very, very strict and said, "You have to follow these guidelines," which they did. And that's why it's here tonight, because they went through and they do due diligence. But I know for a fact, by being in that meeting, that they were absolutely in support of this. The other thing is, it also was brought up in that meeting with the point that Mr. Marcus just brought up, and, you know, this was the beginning of the school year, and again, there was no concern at all by Mr. Marvitz, who was, we know, you know, to take those kids, and I think from what I understand, a majority of them were going to the Madeline English, there were some to the, to the high school, and I didn't even know if any of them have to go to any of these other additional places like Shore Collaborative or anything, I'm not sure to this day. But they stepped right up right away, and they were like, "Whatever you need, we'll step in, we'll do, you know, get the, you know, get the services provided without a hiccup." So I just want to, I would just want to mention that. So Mr. Barrows, then Ms. Sarni.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate, I appreciate the review. Malden Transportation has in the past, first of all, before I even mention that, it's not uncommon, we extend contracts all the time here. It's not uncommon for us to extend the contract. I want to point that Malden Transportation has been doing services for, for us, I believe, for over 20 years. And I want to thank the administration for sending us the contract. The last contract that we have with them, I shouldn't say the last, the current contract that we have with Malden Transportation is dated in 2006. Since 2006, we have been extending their contract. We haven't gone out to bid, which is not illegal, it's totally legal. Why? Because mass general law allows school districts whose business with, with transportation companies are solely for special education to extend the contract. So there's nothing illegal with this body extending the contract. But I want to notice that we have been extending this contract since 2006, when the first contract was started. They are asking us, a few months ago, or about a year ago, they have asked us to change the contract because the price of gas was too expensive, and that, excuse me, that was affecting their, affecting their profit. We had a heated discussion here, and they end up withdrawing their request. The committee voted not to. The request that we have in front of us is that we extend their contract for two more years. So the contract expires in June of next year, and they are asking that we extend the contract. So it's June 30, 2024. They are asking that we extend the contract for two more years, however, with two yearly step increase. So it's not only extending the contract, but extending the contract already with an increase. I'm not opposing to extend a contract, but as we are in the middle of starting a, or actually already have started, the budget process for FY '25, I would like this, to see this item go into the finance committee, where the finance committee could see, I do respect and I do understand, Mr. Chairman, that you met with the CFO, but I'd love to ask questions to the CFO regarding the budget, because we are, we have a new superintendent, welcome Mr. Hart. It's great to have you here. We have, we are in the process of developing our budget for FY '25, which we're going to have infusion of money with the Student Opportunity Act, thankfully, but we don't have a clear picture of this budget yet. So I would be in favor of moving this to the finance committee, to meet with the finance committee, to bring the CFO, ask questions about our budget. I mean, can we afford to have, how can we afford to have this true increase? Will that hurt anything else or not? I'd love to ask those questions before we have a chance to come. In fact, there will even be a chance to the new, to the interim superintendent to also be able to ask these questions to the CFO. In the meantime, while you have that on the finance committee, we will also analyze this grant money, federal dollars, that we'll be receiving that perhaps could be helping with this process. So I'm not raising here a point of being opposed to extend this contract, but I believe as we are not being asked to only extend the contract, but extend the contract with increase for two years, that we should have a chance to ask further questions to our CFO in our finance committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Sarni?
Thank you. I'd like to, Ms. Lambert, bring forward her, what she has looking into and bring it forward to us, so we can see those other options and make a clear decision. I again agree, I have no problem extending with the Malden Transportation, but I also want to see other avenues, if something's better out there, and then stick in just one thing. So I'm hoping that we can maybe lay this over until, I'll put it in finance, so we can have, Ms. Lambert bring forward what she has prepared, or get more prepared for what she needs to put in front of us.
Thank you, Ms. Sarni. So just to let everybody know, again, we do not know who's going to be back in this body come January, but just to let you know, and I will say I am opposed to putting it in committee, is that, the reason why, and all due respect to Mr. Barrows, is that all legislation dies, anything that we have, whether it's in committees or anything, every two years on the election year. And so to get it into committee, to discuss it in committee, to get it back out on the floor, we don't, I don't know how much time we're going to have to be able to do that. And so my suggestion is, is that I just, me personally, I'm opposed. If this was the beginning of the year, I would say yes, but anything that's a committee that doesn't come out and voted on in a little over a month, it's going to die, and a new piece would have to be brought up. So that's just my.
Call for the question.
All right, we have a call for the question. The call for the question requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. O'Conna, please call the roll. Mr. Barrows?
No.
Ms. Cardillo?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano? Ms. Lambert?
No.
Mr. LaMonica?
No.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
No.
Mr. McGlaughlin? Chairman Mangan? Four ayes, five noes. The call for the question fails.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to lay it over to the next meeting.
Ms. Sarni, first of all, Mr. Barrows, then Ms. Sarni.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is Ms. Hiliani here this evening?
She's not.
She's not.
I don't see her there.
Okay, so we don't have anybody from admin here.
Like I said, there was.
Mr. Marashi was also involved in these conversations.
No, he was not. It was, I was asking, I attended, it was myself, Mr. Hiliani, Ms. Giant, and both Mr. Marvitz, and again, this was right around the time of the whole Envision Hotel thing starting up. And Mr. Marvitz laid out, as you saw in the packet there, and, you know, the extreme costs, and even at that point, there was no talk about, and I understand and certainly respect, Mrs. Lambert, you know, wanted to go more, you know, energy efficient and more environmentally safe vehicles and everything, but even at that meeting, I can tell you, there was no concern about, this is the route that we should go or anything like that. It was, you've done a great job, you met, you know, the needs, and we need you again because of this Envision thing. And Mr. Marvitz, they laid out, as you saw there, the extreme costs, like just over the past two years, like 30, 35% increase in certain vehicles they're trying to get. We all know how it is to hire people and retain people, so the cost of, you know, to retain people, because especially now with places around here, you know, Dunkin' Donuts and other places getting $20 an hour and so forth, they've had to increase their things, not only to, to stay with the competitive market, but also to maintain. And I think, I just, me personally, again, I think, you know, I support this, and again, it just goes to, you know, tell me one complaint, or five complaints, or 10 complaints we get from Malden Transportation, okay? And, you know, I'm not saying that we'd ever walk away from this thing, but we have seven months left on the contract, and the thing is, is that, is it a big, a good-sized increase? Yes. But if you look at it, at the end of the day, it's, you know, we don't have kids waiting out in the freezing cold, you know, saying the bus never came, or, you know, going to any, where they needed to be shipped to, or anything else like that. There was never concern when the Envision Hotel thing came up, like, oh, you know, we'll see, we'll do the best we can do. No, it was, we'll step up and we'll work with you, as there always has been, as Mr. Barrows said, I think it was since 2006. So this has gone under Superintendent Hiliani, Superintendent Gotti, and Superintendent Forestier. So this has been in effect for 17 years. And I never, me personally, I've never heard one complaint, not one parent ever sent me an email or a text or called me on the phone and said. So I just think, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Well, the other thing I wanted to say, this letter is dated back to July, this past July. So there has been plenty of time to ask questions. I did consult with you on this at one point, because I know you had that meeting. I did consult with Ms. Giant on this, because we're looking at projecting for the future with this kind of money, and nothing ever seemed to be a problem. And I know Ms. Hiliani was very much in favor of continuing relationship with MTI because of the success rate. So at this point, I just move favorable action on the item.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are on the motion, right? So a couple things that I want to, a couple points that I want to mention. First, this body continues its work regardless who it's going to be here in the new year. This vendor has a contract all the way until June, and there is nothing wrong of talking to our CFO, analyzing. This letter is dated July. I received this letter on Friday with the materials from our meeting. I've never seen this letter to Ms. Giant before. That was never brought to me or to my attention, to my email.
It was the postmark, they sent it to us.
That says Ms. Cardillo, not Mr. Barrows.
I know that, but I think they sent it.
Just want to mention that, that says Ms. Cardillo, not Mr. Barrows.
But I wasn't the only one that got this.
With all due respect to my colleague, but what I want to mention is, I'm not here speaking in opposition of renewing this contract. We also should be very careful as a body, this is a public body dealing with public money. We should be very careful on saying praises and praises and praises to a vendor when we have other vendors who could also be sending us, other vendors who also have been doing business with the district for a long time. They could be sending us a letter and say, "Actually, I want to might extend it with a raise too. We'll bring it to the school committee, we'll, we'll see, and if we don't grant it, why grant it to one and did not grant to the other one?" I'm not opposing of Malden Transportation. I haven't received any complaining from Malden Transportation, actually, I received one, and that's it for my time here. What I'm asking, as a member of a public body dealing with public money, that we go to our finance committee, ask a few additional questions, hear from our colleague who is bringing information about an infusion of federal dollars that could help us in this process as well, and then bring back to the agenda and vote it on. That is no big deal, what I'm asking here, as a member of a public body dealing with public money. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Sarni.
Through you, the chair, if I could ask Ms. Lambert if December would be enough time that we can put it, lay it over to December, give her time, and bring it in front of us to everybody to hear it, not until committee, so it takes forever, and some people can't meet, but if we bring it in front of the body, let Ms. Lambert bring it forward, and then we can make a decision. The same thing, I'm not opposed of it, but I'd love to hear something new and if something better, and that's my, my motion. I'd like to lay it over in December if Ms. Lambert.
I'll second.
Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, and I just want to clarify, I did not receive the letter. Had I been aware of the letter or the, or the timing, I would have, you know, expedited the work I was doing, or, you know, put it on the agenda to even discuss it as an option and to put it in committee far earlier. I did not know until I received the notice on Thursday and the packet on Friday, and I just did not have enough time to prepare all of the material, and I did not feel it was appropriate, since I did not put, it's a very specific request to look into as far as the IRA funding, and it's not just for energy efficiency, but it's also part of the state's 2030 goals. There was a recent climate report, it's part of the health and the infrastructure. You can look at other districts like Beverly that are using bi-directional charging and are actually able to reduce their energy bills in their buildings when the buses are not being used. So there, there is a lot to this, and I can have it by December. I would have had it ready had I known prior. It just was never presented to the body, and I personally did not receive that forthwith, or I would have.
Thank you. Ms. Cristiano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to go along with my colleague Ms. Sarni had mentioned that we, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not against Malden Taxi. I mean, I know the history here, they've done a great job for us, but, you know, if there's opportunities, you know, to bring in some federal dollars into this whole situation and, and, you know, create a more safe environment for our kids with. with, you know, climate efficiencies, you know, I'd be in favor of, you know, laying this on the table till December. And, you know, I mean, again, they're going to be here till June. And I think we all, I don't think anybody's ever said anything that's negative towards modern transportation. In fact, again, I know the history, they've done a good job for us. But, you know, what's a month to wait?
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor.
Ms. Cardello.
What would be the problem if we did vote on this about getting any future funds? Would that deter us from getting extra monies?
No.
So.
Would not.
It wouldn't? Okay, so what would the point be? We would still be able to go looking for that? And I think Ms. Lambert wants to answer to that, so I will.
You defer.
I'll defer to Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, because it would replace a portion of our transportation. And if modern transportation can meet that need, that's fine. But it would be looking forward. So there are two different options within the IRA funding. One is if a district has their own fleet of buses, which we know we do not. And the other is if one contracts out their services. So we have two separate transportation contracts, correct? If, the last I checked. And like I said, this is preliminary research. I was prepared to present it in December. But the special education transportation specifically, due to the, you know, our latest community health assessment showed that the number of ER visits for respiratory ailments is one of our highest medical needs. And we know that Everett was impacted by respiratory illnesses severely, considering COVID, the flu, and RSV because of some of those environmental issues. And that's why I've been looking into this more from the health perspective for our students. But if we were to do this, then we would be committing to a contract extension fulfilling that need, and we would not be eligible to apply for specific federal funding. And perhaps I present the information, and it's not the way that the committee wants to go. I respect that, I respect the institution and the body. But I would just like the opportunity to present it first.
Thank you. Ms. Cardello.
I have a follow-up question on that. Mr. Chairman, would any company coming in have to have all electric vehicles? Is that the route we're going here? That this would be a turnover, that a company would have to go all-electric? Or is there a special fuel out there that's not caustic?
Ms. Lambert.
It would replace some of our dependent on distance. Like I said, it's preliminary, so I don't have the information prepared. I'd be happy to have those questions answered. And if anybody has questions they would like to see in the presentation, I would be happy to make sure that it's included. There are distance restrictions. Although school bus electrification has improved vastly. It's part of the reason that not just the federal, but the state government is really pushing that. We are a heavy, heavy commercial corridor in Everett, and our air quality has had an impact. Diesel buses serve our youngest and most vulnerable students, and they are one of the greatest contributors to the air quality impacts. But there are distance restrictions, so it would not be able to replace all. But it could replace a significant amount of our special ed transportation.
Question.
We have a motion by Ms. Sarni, seconded by Ms. Lambert, to call for the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Can you repeat the question?
The question is, let me see, to lay it over till December to have a meeting, I guess, so Ms. Lambert could present. Also to just remember, like I said, at that point, if the information comes in, and I'm not disparaging anybody from voting either way. But what you could be running up against is now going back to the table to renegotiate all this. Renegotiate it all, go back to the table. I don't know how long that's going to take. Go out, get particularly, I mean, possibly get comps again. But all this stuff, like I said, it's still in its infancy. But you're going to look at possibly changing everything, whatever. Who knows what's going to come back in front of us? That's why I'm opposed. I understand and I certainly respect Ms. Lambert's, you know, looking at alternative solutions for, you know, for environment and things like that. But I'm just opposed because I think it could open up a big can of worms. And I just, I'm not willing to go there and take that chance. But that's just me. Thank you. So the thing is to extend it to December. About the, Ms. Lambert, with the first meeting in December? Okay, and this is to extend it to the first meeting in December. Mr. O'Connell. Please call the roll.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
No.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Marcus.
No.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Chairman Mangan.
No.
Motion passes five to three.
Motion passes five to three. Mr. Superintendent, please read the next item.
Item two is a request for approval of the following four grants, three of which were competitive. The Innovation to Pathways Grant in the amount of $50,000. The SEL and Mental Health Grant in the amount of $48,434. And the SALT Lafayette After-School Program in the amount of $107,700. The fourth grant is an earmark that we were fortunate enough to receive in the amount of $50,000, thanks to our Senator D. Domenico for the Everett High School marching band to participate in the events in Florida in February. So those are the four that I'm asking the committee to consider.
Favorable action on the grants.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Sarni, seconded by Mr. Barrows for favorable action. And Ms. Lambert on the motion.
I just had a question. Do we know what pathway this pertains to? The first one, the Innovation to Pathways. I know that with the shifting, I didn't, I did not see. Usually we have a letter for the grant.
This particular grant provides transportation to and from internships for our students. So it's the third year of the grant process. And this is, again, based on our performance in the first two years.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call vote. Mr. O'Connell.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Marcus.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Chairman Mangan.
Yes.
So moved, eight to zero.
Eight to zero, you have passed. Mr. Superintendent, please read the next item.
Item number three is a request for approval of the district's medication delegation form. This is a form that is done annually to allow our school personnel, non-nurse personnel, to administer certain medications to students requiring that. I would probably respectfully ask the committee to lay this on the table. The application process is in formation, if you will. And that application would go to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. But if you would lay that on the table, I can bring that back in the next meeting.
Make a motion to lay it over.
We have a motion by Ms. Lambert, seconded by Mr. Barrows to lay this on the item, postpone this item to the next agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Superintendent, please read the next item.
The fourth and last item under my report of the superintendent is a request for approval to rent the Lafayette School Gymnasium to the Charlestown Youth Soccer Association. This grant has been, excuse me, this approval has been granted in the past. And this organization does pay the City of Everett funds to use the facility.
Favorable action. Second.
Motion by Ms. Lambert, seconded by Ms. Cristiano for favorable action, because it is a financial thing. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Mr. Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Chairman Mangan.
Yes.
So moved, eight to zero.
Upon information or privilege?
Privilege.
Okay, please state the reason for that.
Well, my name was mentioned tonight about something.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. This evening, my name was mentioned about, thank you. This evening, my name was mentioned regarding the superintendent's evaluation that no one, that I did not speak the evening of the vote. I did speak and mention my concerns on the evaluation. But my concerning is, I would like eventually, maybe we can put it on the agenda to see all evaluations and go over how it was determined and how it was voted. My concern was when I made my decision, I did speak. I wanted everyone to know that. Out there, someone spoke and said we did, some of our members did not. I know I did. The other reason, also the other night, when we had to make a decision on removing, it's a human resource. It's an issue that's a privacy act. You cannot violate human resources. You cannot ask personal questions on a human resource issue. That's a violation of someone's privacy. But I wanted to make a statement that I did speak, and I do eventually would put something on the agenda at the next meeting that we will all look at the evaluation again and how it was evaluated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarni. Mr. Superintendent, next item, please.
So items seven and eight, there is nothing submitted. Item nine is bills and payrolls.
Ms. Cristiano.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to submit bills and payroll in the amount of $3,794,125.54.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Sarni, seconded by Ms. Lambert, to submit bills and payroll in the amount of $3,794,125.54. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Mr. Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni. Chairman Mangan.
Yes.
So moved, eight to zero.
Eight to zero, you have submitted bills and payroll in the amount, Ms. Cristiano.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pay bills and payroll in the amount of $3,794,125.54.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Ms. Lambert, to pay bills and payroll in the amount of $3,794,125.54. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Mr. Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Chairman Mangan.
Yes.
So moved, eight to zero.
You have paid bills and payrolled in that amount, eight to zero. Mr. Superintendent, the next item, please.
Item number 10, there is no unfinished business. Item 11, new business.
So folks, this just came to me, and I apologize. So I am invoking, only because this is something that needs to be done for purposes of our new superintendent. But item, excuse me, section two, excuse me, item two, section three, under our rules, allow me to put anything considered an emergency or unforeseen on the agenda. So I'm just going to read what it states, and this was given to me by Mr. O'Connell. And this is just so that the superintendent would have certain authorities. And I ask, we take up a new item under new business and vote to authorize interim Superintendent William D. Hart to be one of the district's four authorized signatories. Due to the past week's timeline, we appointed Mr. Hart on Thursday night. There wasn't, this wasn't foreseen at the time to put this on there. So I would make a motion that we add this to the agenda tonight as an unforeseen item.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman. Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Mr. Barrows, excuse me, Ms. Sarni, to add this particular item, given Mr. Superintendent Hart the authority to, as an authorized signature. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Then I move for favorable action.
Favorable action, roll call vote.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Sarni, seconded by Mr. Barrows for favorable action. Mr. Clerk, excuse me, Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Mr. Marcus.
He said yes.
It was Mr. La Monica, he said, at first.
I'm a ventriloquist.
Ms. Sarni. Chairman Mangan.
Yes.
So moved, eight to zero.
You have passed eight to zero, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Sarni, seconded by Mr. La Monica to adjourn. Roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello. Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Mr. Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Chairman Mangan.
Yes.
You are adjourned.
You are adjourned, eight to zero. Thank you, everybody. Thanks.